We have to wait.
Good evening, everyone. This is my first time doing this, so please bear with me. But we're gonna call this motion, I meant this meeting, to open. First, we're gonna acknowledge that all of our board members are here itself, Mr. Lundey. But other than that, our board members here, our superintendent, Alicia Bashir, is here, and our secretary, Angela Ball, is here. So I've asked one of our STEM students, Nolan Amen, to open us in the prayer and pledge. So can you please stand for prayer and pledge?
All right, I'm gonna start with a prayer. Dear God, we thank you for letting us be here today and gather as a community to talk about the future of Taylor County and everything and all the accomplishments that everyone has achieved here today. And we thank you for just letting us, we thank you for letting us accomplish all these achievements that we have done. And we thank you for everything that you've let us done and will accomplish in the future. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nolan. Now, we will go to the adoption of our agenda. And with the adoption of the agenda, we will also go ahead and approve all consent items. So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, motion by Ms. Carlton and second by Ms. Mathis. Next, we will have the approval, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? Any opposes? Okay, thank you. Next, we will have item number 2.04, the approval of our minutes from our February 7, 2023 Regular School Board Meeting Close Hearing and Executive Session. Do I have a motion?
I'll make sure.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion by Ms. Agner and we have a second by Ms. Carlton. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? Okay. Next, we have some recognitions. Tonight, we're gonna start with our first recognition. And we have Ms. Tillman. Do your, we got a recognition tonight for Ms. Roberta. Yeah. So I don't know if you wanted to do it or if one of the welding instructors.
Superintendent Bashirs and board members, thank you very much for this opportunity. This evening, I have the honor of recognizing a very special BBTC now alumnus, Robertica Burt Mango. She is only the second female to ever complete the BBTC welding program. Don't look at me, Burt. And in addition to being a completer, Ms. Mango earned three American Welding Society certifications, including FCAW plate, SMAW plate, and GMAW plate. And in doing so, she becomes the most certified female welder in BBTC history. Burt is currently employed at Big Top Industry, where she is gainfully employed and making well above minimum wage as a certified welder. So it's my pleasure to introduce you to BBTC's most certified welder.
We have something for you as well to give you a recognition. And I'm, I'm gonna ask you to set up your page. That's why. I think Burt knows why. Some kids leave it on their heart or something like that. Probably self-prank. This one's small. I think it's on my heart. We call her for tennis.
Oh, six years.
We are very proud of all of you sitting here. Don't get along with her. Burt was the one that, her mother passed. That's a pivotal, a pivotal time in Robertica's life. And Burt persevered and it's been a long time. And we are very proud. Very, very proud of you. Thank you all.
Yes, we have, we have two more recognitions. We have another one by Ms. Tillman for her Skills USA winners.
He had to, Lord put up with her. Something for you. Again, Superintendent Bashirs and board members, February 7, Governor Ron DeSantis and Florida Commissioner of Education Manny Diaz Jr. commemorated February as Career and Technical Education Month. CTE Month is observed to recognize the accomplishments of students and educators and highlight the collaboration among leaders, businesses, and industry partners that contribute to the success of CTE programs across Florida. Florida has nearly 800,000 K-12 CTE students, the highest in the state's history, more than 380,000 post-secondary CTE students, and over 17,000 registered apprenticeships, a direct result of Governor DeSantis' leadership and policies that support workforce education. This evening is my pleasure to introduce to you some very special Skills USA members from Big Ben Technical College. I'd like to begin by introducing the President, Edward Cologne, and ask him to come forward. You may recall, Edwin is no stranger to you all. Edwin last year was the AWS Regional Winner. He was the Region One Skills USA Welding Post-Secondary Adult Winner. He was the State of Florida's winner, and he placed 15th in the nation last year at Skills USA Competition. He is now currently serving as the President of our chapter.
All right, how's everyone doing today? Practicing still, practicing still.
He just got handed this.
Right? So I'm gonna start off with explaining a little bit of what Skills is for if anyone is not familiar. So Skills USA is a career and technical student organization that empowers its members to become world-class citizens, leaders, and responsible American citizens. Skills offers local, state, and national opportunities for students to learn and practice personal, personal workplace and technical skills, which Taylor County knows all about that, because we take names. And through Skills USA, students, teachers, and industry work, works together to ensure Florida and America has a skilled workforce. So does definitely Big Ben Technical College. We ensure that. But today, we have a lot of our competitors and our officers here today, but I wanna take a minute to introduce all of our officers. So we'll start off with our Post-Secondary Vice President, Alora Baxley. Then we have our Secondary Vice President, Bailey Lewis. Our Secretary, Elena Price. And our Treasurer, Hunter Hughes. Our Parliamentarian, Priscilla Tate. Reporter, Maria, that's kinda hard to say. Yep. And our Chaplain, which is Carolina Knight. And our Advisors, which none of this would be possible without them helping us. We have Mr. Heath Pridgen. We have Mr. John Tripp. Carrie, she here?
Not here.
She's not here, but she's super supporter. And our Student Government Advisor, Mr. Luke Mosley. And can we just get one big round of applause for all of our officers, our advisors, and our competitors, please?
Again, board members and Superintendent Bashirs, for the past few weeks, BBTC Skills USA members have been competing in the Regional One Skills USA Competitions. Students who place first, second, and third in their divisions will move on to the state competition in Jacksonville. This is gonna be long, because they're so good. And we also have medals that we'd like for you to present, Superintendent Bashirs. So in basic healthcare skills, in third place, bronze medal, Maria Aragorn. In second place, silver medal, Carolina, Carolina Knight. And in first place, Bailey Lawson. And all, well, I'll tell you that in a minute. Okay, first aid CPR, post-secondary division. Our first-place winner is Alora Baxley. I'd like to point out that Alora placed sixth in the nation last year, so we're expecting some major results here. Our high school division, first place, gold medal, Madison Rayburg.
All right.
All right, nurse assisting, post-secondary division, first place, Priscilla Tate. Medical terminology, post-second division, second place, silver medal, Austin Pridgen. First place, gold medal, Samantha Coker. I'm sure you all know, but just to clarify, post-secondary are the college students and secondary are dual-enrolled students, so we have both, both chapters. In welding, in the post-second division, third place, bronze medal, Davy Wood. Second place, Davy competed last year, he was the first place in the state winner in the high school division, and he placed 25th in the nation. Second place, silver medal, JW Hudson, who is currently the AWS District Champion. And first place, gold medal, going back for, for hopefully a national championship, Edwin Cologne. High school division, second place, silver medal, Justin Touchton. First place, gold medal, Ashton Strickland. Our welding fabrication team, we're very excited about this. This will be our first time competing at state. Our team won first place at the regional competition. So first place, gold medal, Gabrielle Salteres, Blaze Roberts, and Excali Luna. They're tall. Salteres, I'll get it. In the welding sculptor division, not here is Dakota Matthews, who won first place. And then our job interview contest will take place at the end of this week, and competing are Hunter Hughes and Elena Price. I am so excited to tell you that all of our students will be moving on to the state competition.
Congratulations.
Take a picture. I'd also like to mention that this week is National FFA Week, and I'd like to wish our teachers, Ms. Jessica Grubbs and Ms. Sarah Bowles, and the FFA members in our, in our county, a happy National FFA Week, and wish them much luck as they continue to compete in various career development events across the state. Perhaps you saw the high school team participated in meets judging last week, and they're doing very well in their competitions, are getting ready to do aquaculture, I believe. And we certainly want to wish them also good luck as they sell their livestock Thursday night at the auction at North Florida Fair, and invite you to come and bid on that if you're looking for a freezer full of quality beef or pork. Thank you all.
We have one more recognition on the item 2.05, and that is our Taylor County Middle School STEM Team.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Ammon. I teach sixth grade math at the middle school, and I am bringing my STEM team here to share with you some accomplishments that they recently received down at Kennedy Space Center. So we've been practicing since October for this competition, and it's not just a State of Florida competition, it's actually a national competition. Several, every other year, there's a team from Ireland that comes, we've had teams from Texas, the state of Washington, there's a Georgia team that's really, really good, and that's our competition. We always ask, how do we compare to Strong Rock when we're at this competition? And we're right there with them, then we're doing great. So this competition that we do is Student Astronaut Challenge. So there's four parts. The first part's an engineering challenge, and that's something that these kids go in blind to. They are put in a Skylab, so it emulates being on the International Space Station. So you have a mission control crew and a flight crew, and they have to solve a problem. And they get scored on a rubric, and there's no way to prepare for it other than teamwork, communication. Then another challenge is the landing challenge. Last year, we took first place in landing. This year, we're a little, there's, the competition was stiff this year. The third competition that we compete in is the design challenge, and we partner with Blue Origin, and they have a program called Postcards to Space. And as long as a Student Astronaut Challenge competition partners with Blue Origin, Blue Origin sends engineers to judge these students. So I have six middle school kids that stood in a room in front of engineers from NASA and Blue Origin and presented a mailbox design, blew them away. They thought their design was phenomenal, and they earned second place in the mailbox design challenge out of all of the teams that competed. Their mailbox is going to the public library tomorrow. Ms. Peg's gonna display it and partner with the community and provide the opportunity for preschools and senior citizens and all the people that she served to create postcards for our Postcards to Space program. And the final event is the simulator. And so the simulator was designed by some engineers to mimic being an actual space shuttle. So these kids have to learn communication, COM blocks is what it's called, and it's a communication format that astronauts use when they launch a space shuttle. And they have to speak to mission control. And it's a three-part competition. So the first round is a normal run. You launch the space shuttle, you do an orbit, you perform some experiments, and you land. If you make it to the semifinals, then they throw in an emergency or two. Then, if you make it to the finals, well, let's just say that those alarms do not stop in the finals. It is one emergency after another. If you've ever seen Apollo 13, it's Houston, we have a problem. These kids persevered, and they had a goal. Their goal was to beat Strong Rock, who takes first place every year. And I'm so proud of our team because they earned first place in the simulator this year, which was a great part of this competition. So I wanna recognize my teammates. I have our Captain Fisher Smith. Y'all just come stand up at the front. They have their medals from the award ceremony already. You guys know the drill, girls in the middle. Alex Tetter, oh, Fisher is our mission director. He is like the head, so if there's any problems, he has final say. Alex Tetter, come on up. Alex is one of our mission control specialists. Then we have our other mission control specialist, Carly Sawalace. And then I have our flight crew. Our flight crew consists of our pilot, Trey Williams. This is Trey, Trey and Carly's first year on the STEM team, so. And then our mission commander, Daly Lloyd. Daly is the one that actually has to land in the SIM. And what really got us to this, from the semifinals to the finals, is they threw a night landing at these kids who have never landed at night before, so you can't see anything but runway lights at the very end, and they were at a low altitude. And she hit it like that. The flight, the flight director and the STEM control person said that it's hard for them to even make that landing, so that was really impressive. And then we have Nolan Amen, he's our flight engineer. He's in charge of turning off the alarm. And these kids have put in lots and lots of hours of work to be able to accomplish this.
If you'll stay right there, guys. We have something. I'm gonna see if I listened carefully enough to be able to do this correctly. Austin Fisher. All right. All right, Alex. Carly. I noticed Carly, on your shirt, it doesn't say your last name.
And just briefly, my name's Heather Smith. I'm the parent of Fisher Smith, and on behalf of the team and all the parents of this team, we want to acknowledge and give appreciation to Mrs. Ammon for all of the hard work and dedication she's given to our team. I get a little emotional, because she gives a lot to these kids. So we have a little token of recognition that we wanna give her.
It was a big group earlier, but I'd like to get a picture with you all, with the board members, too. Y'all were just very big, and I could not do it all at the same time, but I would like to. Like I said.
Smile.
We're gonna call some board members if you'll stay right here. Can y'all put it on course one more time?
I know, I was gonna say, she's no stranger, but she's leaving, so.
Yeah, y'all don't have to stay. Good to see you. Tell Glenn I said hi.
Okay, next on our agenda is item 301, where we will have items of interest for the public. This is where anyone that has any concerns from the public may address us. Okay, doesn't look like we have anyone. So our consent items have already been approved with adoption of the agenda, so we moved down to item number 12.17. Where we have an action item is a termination of employment, and the position is listed, so do I have a motion? Okay, and do I have a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposes? Okay, so we're moving right on down to items of interest by the superintendent and the board. Ms. Bashirs?
A wonderful night. I wish every night could be like this. Like, I think that we worry, and I think we should worry about our, our future and future of our children and our grandchildren. I don't, I don't know if worry is the right word, but I think we should be concerned. However, when you see things like we saw tonight, that's got to make you feel good and know that there are plenty of students out there that are gonna be just fine to replace some of us, because they have the drive and they have the willingness and they have the, the work effort to do that. And so I love seeing not only our middle school students, but our secondary and post-secondary students. That speaks volumes to what we have in this town. Sometimes we are inundated by things that go wrong, so tonight's a wonderful night of celebration, when we can see all the things that are going right in our community, something we should all be proud of.
Okay, Ms. Ball?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Agner?
I just wanna reiterate what Alicia said. I know a lot of those kids, and I know their background, I know where they come from, I know their parents, and, you know, it's just, this town is a great town to raise children in. It is, I know there's always gonna be good and bad and everything, but like you said, a night like tonight really shows how, just the effort that the grownups have put in, how it pays off. And I appreciate everybody that's fed into their lives and helped them to get to where they are. That's it.
Ms. Mathis?
Well, y'all said it, but I'm really, really proud of Robertica. I think she made us all tear up, and then, you know, all of us know, we've watched her through the years, how she's dealt with things, and just to see her where she's at now, that is really such a blessing for everybody who's seen it. So that's wonderful. And Skills USA team, that was, that is really good news. I can't wait to see how they finish up their year. And I think that's about it. Oh, the STEM team, that was, that's awesome, too. So, yeah. That's it.
Just the same thing, just congratulations to all of our Skills USA and to Robertica and to the STEM team. And I think it is, it's great that we can recognize them, and it is a good feeling. Also, I think we're having a family engagement night tonight.
We do, from five to seven at Taylor County Primary School.
And then I also wanted to say good luck to the FFA students this week.
Yes.
And I just want to again acknowledge all our students here tonight. Again, it was so good to be able to recognize our middle school students and their accolades, as well as their coach, Ms. Amen, and the work that they're doing with the STEM team. Every year, they go to NASA, I think they do such a great job in representing our Taylor County School District and representing the state of Florida. I don't know if you guys have ever checked out their Facebook page, but like Ms. Amen said, there are teams that come from all over. And when you read the different competitions and the different people that are there, I think that, you know, speaks to this district and the work that we're doing in this district in regards to the different activities that our kids get the opportunity to participate in, as well as to be able, to be able to spotlight the academia and the work that they do, you know, in school and outside of school. And again, I would just like to acknowledge Robertica. She is no stranger to none of us in this room. So to see, you know, for her to be able to, as Ms. Mathis says, transition, you know, through the different stages, and, you know, to go from, you know, middle school to, you know, post-secondary to now gainfully employed, I think that does all of our hearts some good, to know, you know, that she has, you know, went on to further herself, as well as she, you know, transitioned from our K-12 to our technical school, and that she's done wonders down there. She's recognizing our district, you know, as the second female welding student, as well as one that's holding those numbers certification. And, you know, just to see her employed. So we all, I think we all know her mother, and I think we will all know her mother would be so proud of her right now, as well as, you know, probably- as well as, you know, probably looking at us and saying, "Look at here." So, um, I just want to acknowledge her and her accomplishments. I want to acknowledge the other STEM members. I meant the other skills members, as well as those other students, the welding students that was recognized. And I just want to give a shout out to, um, the members that was acknowledged who did participate in the skills, as well as the advisors that, um, are working with their program. I don't think that's a required program, but it's one that they take participation in at our technical school and it's one that they take serious and they apply the work and the dedication and the commitment to them. So I just want to acknowledge them for that. And again, acknowledge Ms. Tillman. She does such a great job with spotlighting our career in technical program and doing everything that she can to make sure that we stands out and we stand, you know, in the front when it comes to career and technical in this state, as well as in this region. I appreciate her acknowledging the proclamation from Governor DeSantis for as this month being Career and Technical Month. And again, everything that our community and our district do to acknowledge the importance of career and technical and what it means to our rural community, but just what it means to students in having, you know, a option and an opportunity to further themselves. Again, and I just want to acknowledge, um, it was one more thing. I don't forgot what it was. Oh, um, Mr. Mosley, he was here tonight. And so I want to acknowledge him for him being back and I'm glad he is well. And again, I, you know, I'm gonna ask that we continue to keep him and his, um, family in our prayers, but it's good to see that he's back and he's back in the flow. So I just wanted to recognize him tonight. And again, that's all I have, so.
And let's pray for Danny's safe return.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, we miss Mr. Lundy tonight, but he's on our minds. So we just wanna keep him and his, um, family in his prayers as they travel and return safely. Other than that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, Ms. Carton? You have a second? All in favor? All right. Needing adjourn.